I just want to say good morning to everybody. It's Friday, January 8th, and I'm Janice Clay, Chair of the Civic Caucus. We are a public policy organization dedicated to carrying on Minnesota's tradition of exploring critical issues through deep, nonpartisan discussion and informed debate. Today, we're here for just such a critical issue. We will be interviewing Paul Ostrow on the topic of Minneapolis government structure reform. Paul was a city council member from 1998 through 2009 and served as council president and also on the Budget Committee. And he's been Assistant Anoka County Attorney since 2010. At the end of his time on the council, Paul led efforts to reform Minneapolis government structure. And although this did not move forward back in 2009, it's currently quite a topic being explored in 2021 by the Minneapolis City Charter Commission. Our board member Clarence Chalbeter, who has deep experience in this area also, will be conducting the meeting. And our Associate Director Dana Schrader will be taking notes. And our Digital Content Manager and Zoom Support Helen Bear will be providing technical support. I'm joined by many members of the interview group of the Civic Caucus. So I will ask Clarence now to take it away.
Thanks, Janice. We've got Paul, as she's indicated, who is very familiar with how the city operates, who does what, who's responsible for what, sitting on the city council for a number of years. And then, as a leader of the city council and proposal to change the fundamental organization and structure of government in the city of Minneapolis, which is a consequence of a thing called the city charter. Paul is going to be with us today, as she's indicated, to share with us his insight, his experience as a city council member, and his work in developing a proposal in 2009. He can tell us about that proposal, what it responded to, and what happened to that initiative. So at this point, we'd like to turn to Paul, who can begin this information for 10, 15 minutes, and then we'll open up to questions of everybody in the group.
Thank you, Clarence, and thank you, everyone. Let me just start by saying that for the past 100 years, people that have led the city of Minneapolis and people that have been astute observers of Minneapolis have similarly come to the conclusion that the structure of Minneapolis city government is not what it needs to be and is an impediment to decisive, effective leadership of the city. Perhaps because the city, despite that fact, has overall during the past century fared at least relatively well, it has never risen to a point where the political will has been there to change it. So I, for one, am very pleased that the Charter Commission has stepped forward really quickly. The efforts to start change of Minneapolis City Charter have basically been once every generation. There were efforts in the 1920s. There was an effort when Mayor Hubert Humphrey, who first ran unsuccessfully. If you look back at history, one of the main topics of his campaign was charter reform for the city of Minneapolis. Back in 1943, mayoral candidate Humphrey had no concrete proposal, but believed strongly that there needed to be a comprehensive governmental machinery to supervise a planned program of development for the city. About a generation after that, led by folks at Citizens League, other reformers in Minneapolis, there was a subsequent effort to change the Minneapolis City Charter. The Citizens League, at its infancy, was working on this issue. And consistently, for the 55 years of its existence, has encouraged charter change as needed for transparency and accountability. To his never-ending credit, in my view, after those efforts in the 60s were unsuccessful, Mayor Fraser similarly attempted city charter reform. My take on that, and I'm interested in hearing others who served during that period and even before it, is that it was a compromise forced on Mayor Fraser that we had the Executive Committee. My suggestion would be that that was perhaps a slight improvement, but did not get to the fundamental issue that Mayor Fraser was trying to address, but not for any lack of effort on his part. And I think his leadership should be applauded. And as I'll mention later, he was very supportive, as was Congressman Sabo, of our efforts in 2009. So it was then another generation before I decided that this issue was critical. And we can get into the politics during our discussion. But my own thoughts on this evolved from that, those of being a new council member, elected in 1998, from being then the President of the City Council, when my public position on charter change was that it would be a good thing, but that we were still doing great things without it, to a conclusion over the course of my time in office that the city would not succeed without charter change. So it was an evolution that I had. I think what was helpful from our conversations earlier in the week, as we discussed having this conversation, and I think it was Clarence that suggested this, was to look at this, number one, what is the problem we're trying to solve? Number two, what is the solution? And at least, I will suggest what our suggested solution was in 2009. And then perhaps the hardest part of it is how do we get to yes? What are the politics of this? Why have we been unable, for a century, to change a form of government that any objective observer has agreed is not a good form of government for a city of our size and scope? What are the problems? Well, first of all, I want to make clear that we can get into the politics of how all this evolved. When this effort started, it was going to include not only a proposal for city management and city, internal city structure, but it was also going to include a proposal to essentially transfer the responsibilities of the Independent Park Board to the City Council. We're not going to be discussing that today. It also included merging the Board of Investment Taxation and having the tax policies of the city rest solely on the council and mayor. That was voted down. We won't be discussing that today. And as we started the charter discussion, there was a very serious initial discussion that related to the school board and drastically increasing the power of the mayor as it relates to the Minneapolis schools. That also was not ultimately presented. So what we're going to be talking about today has to do with the internal management of the affairs of the city. And when we think about what the problem is, I think before we started this morning, T mentioned the issue of accountability. And it really comes back to the issue of accountability and transparency, and also the issue of the inability of the city as a political organization to make timely, effective, transparent decisions to move the city forward. The form of government we have has been called having 14 bosses. And I think any of us that have been a part of any type of organization knows that if you don't have a clear line of authority, an organization can't be effective, whether you have a small business, a large business, a small or large nonprofit. It has to be clear where the buck stops and when the final decisions are made, who will implement them. So I can tell you any number of stories that we can get into discussion of endless debates in the city council, which resulted perhaps in a staff direction, perhaps in a proposal to be implemented, that literally never happened or was implemented in a way completely inconsistent with the policy discussion that people saw. That was not at all unusual. I could tell you about any number of circumstances that required decisive action, where we spent months and months in frankly endless conversation with any number of staff, any number of other council members, and other players, and did not have the ability to act decisively. The, I found it interesting in the report that Paul Gilje was able to track down just recently, work that the Citizens League did. And I found it interesting that the conclusion then was that the city council had the authority but no responsibility. And the mayor had the responsibility but no authority. And I thought that was a very interesting way to put things. And one of the questions I would ask people to think about, and frankly, the most compelling piece of this is the tragedy of George Floyd's murder. And frankly, what led up to that is the fact that we, for over 15 years, have known that we had serious, serious issues with accountability in Minneapolis Police Department. And as other departments throughout the country took actions to address that, Minneapolis had endless conversations, not necessarily in public, but about these issues, and never implemented a number of reforms, even after they were proposed by the federal government, when the federal government audit the city, even after today's police chief sued the city of Minneapolis. We had a chokehold being used for years and years, and it took the murder of George Floyd for there to be action on that. And we can get into conversations about who runs the police department and all of that. But the bottom line is that nobody felt responsible, nobody was held accountable for that. And if you look at how the city has functioned politically, there has never been accountability among those in power as to the results in the city, whether it be our achievement gap, whether it be our wealth gap. There is no sense that the people that vote in the elections really are holding the people that they vote for accountable. And that is a big piece of this. Another big piece of this frankly is transparency. The form of government that we have really looks as much at personality and the influence and power of individuals rather than a clear line of decision-making. I can tell you that when I was at the city council, for example, a couple of quick stories, I was able to pass by a 13 to 0 unanimous vote to direct the city and the police chief to enter into negotiations to merge the city's crime lab with the county's crime lab. To my knowledge, that still hasn't happened. I only learned subsequently that that was ignored, that the city's police chief went to those meetings, represented that there was no interest on the part of the city in that merger. There was no person at City Hall that I could turn to to say, tell the police chief what to do. This is an action of the city council. All it took was certain conversations, may have involved other elected officials, I don't know. We passed a resolution to go to the legislature and ask for a sales tax increase for the city of Minneapolis. It was never acted on. I spent several months getting that passed through the city council. There's basically no rudder, no discipline, that actions that are taken are actually Finally, I passed a park dedication ordinance. It basically sat there for three years. I was stunned to learn that, having passed that and been the lead author of that, it was three or four years before anyone even bothered enforcing it. And by the time it was enforced, it was completely different than what I'd originally put forward. I could tell you any number of stories about this. So what you end up having is a lot of discussion, a lot of debate, but there are not any final decisions. Decisions even when made are subject to the women caprice of individual council members. And at the end of the day, no sense that the individuals there can or are even willing to hold themselves accountable for the results, for how the city performs. And so this hit a fever pitch for me, I confess, in late 2008. I can remember well a conversation I had with St. Paul Mayor Chris Coleman. I don't know that I shared this publicly at the time, but I can tell you that it was at a League of Minnesota Cities meeting in the fall of 2008. And it was a sense of eureka moment for me, I confess. And Mayor Coleman, to be blunt, said that he had pleaded with Mayor Ryback to take leadership on this issue and to see that there be change in the city charter, because Mayor Coleman had seen the differences. He didn't tell me about specific conversations with the mayor, but I presume Mayor Ryback must have been frustrated, as many of us were. And I don't presume to know exactly why the mayor was not more supportive of this, but I can tell you that following that discussion with Mayor Coleman, I thought long and hard about it over the weekend and decided, well, if there was one thing that I felt honor-bound to do, bluntly, was to at least do my level best to get this issue before the people. And we could talk again about the politics of all of that, but I truly believed that I couldn't leave the city council without at least trying to make this change. Now, what was the change that we were proposing? It actually is relatively simple. Everyone talks about how complicated this all is, but it really is relatively simple. Essentially, the changes we were proposing would place the city coordinator, but it would actually be called a city administrator, we can get into language, but there would be a city administrator that would serve under the authority of the mayor. Now, interestingly enough, the city charter commission just this week interviewed Noah Shuckman, who was an outstanding head of regulatory services in Minneapolis and is now the city administrator of Duluth. And so the city charter commission just heard from Noah about how that works in the city of Duluth. The city administrator reports to the mayor, that was our proposal. Our proposal was that the mayor would appoint all department heads, but the department heads would be subject to the approval of the city council. So that part does not change. However, once appointed, those department heads would serve at the will of, or would be removal, could be removed by the city coordinator. That was our proposal. And so the first advantage of that is that you have then those clear lines of authority. You have one place in the organization where the actual obligation to administer and the established policies of the city rests. And I think it's important to distinguish between the executive authority as far as the implementation of city policy and the political judgments as to what those policies should be. A lot of misunderstanding results from the fact that people think you're providing this unelected person with way too much authority. But at some point, I would argue that if you want to appropriately give power to those who you elect, you have to make sure that when policy is set by those elected officials, that there is accountability in the organization for those policies actually being implemented. So this actually increases, I would argue, the appropriate authority of the elected officials in their political decision-making. What the city administrator would then be obligated to do would be to ensure that the policy decisions are executed and that if they are not executed, that there be appropriate ramifications for that failure. That's what our proposal was. It would eliminate the, I believe, broken system of two-year appointments. There's any number of problems that have resulted from the fact that every two years, every department head must get a majority of votes at the executive committee, before that must be approved for reappointment by the mayor, and then having at least three votes, the executive committee must then be approved by the entire city council. Number one, this creates a situation where department heads are constantly worrying about making sure they have the mayor's support, but also the support of the majority of the executive committee and the majority of support in the city council. So what do you think happens when individual council members make requests that are even inconsistent with established city policy, when those department heads know that they may not have a job if they don't do what they're directed to do by a particular elected official? It also prevents accountability. I will tell you that Chief McManus left Minneapolis for San Antonio. He left Minneapolis because, and this is documented, he stated it, he was not given any vote of confidence by either the mayor or the leadership of the city council when he left in 2006. Neither the mayor nor any leadership of the city council ever had to take accountability for the fact that Chief McManus left. If Chief McManus had served at the pleasure of the mayor, and I can't say this for sure, but if the mayor had decided to discharge him, there would have been political accountability for a major, major decision. There was not. Chief McManus went on to be one of the best reformers of police departments in America and was actually asked to return to San Antonio. So there are any number of these issues that caused me to raise this, and I do want to move on to discussion. We can talk about more of those in the future. But I will just say that for myself, as somebody who, as all of you know, loved the public policy piece of governing, loved to work on efforts to reform, whether I was in the right or the wrong, the functioning of government, I reached a fever pitch of frustration. And that was because ideas went to the city council to die. They were processed to death. And so many issues of necessary reforms never even saw the light of day. And I put a lot of that at the feet of what I believe was a dysfunctional form of government. So the third part of what Clarence was talking about and how we frame this is how do we get to yes? I'll concede that when I listened into the Charter Commission earlier this week, I was a little nonplussed when one of the Charter Commission said that, well, this didn't, council member Ostrow's efforts didn't get much traction. Well, you know, I look back on it, we had six votes at one point on the Minneapolis City Council to put this on the ballot. We had four votes on the Charter Commission, but we could have had more but for a last-minute offer to have a study done, which honestly, we don't need to get into all of that, but it was not a serious proposal, and that took away some of our support of the Charter The way I decided to go forward with this, and I want to minimize how long I talk about this, but in the fall of 2008, my determination was, honestly, I was already thinking about not running again. And I figured I had the time and the energy and the passion to put into this issue. And it was intentional on my part that I would work on this issue on my own. And then I would wait until I had what I believe was a strong proposal with strong support among a group of leaders that I was meeting with, and that only then would I approach the mayor and members of the city council. Because I think I accurately determined that if I was just without any type of prior preparation, without any other partners to offer to the effort, that it would quickly be dismissed, it wouldn't go anywhere. So my goal was to offer to the mayor and the city council an idea that had been vetted by thoughtful folks, and we had a group of about 15 of respected civic and other leaders that worked together on this, that had been vetted with the business community and presented to them and say, this can get, this can move forward if you support it. It's ready to go. And that's what we did. So in January of 2009, I spoke to then Chief of Staff for the mayor, Tina Smith, and frankly, I was relatively encouraged by the conversation, but it was a crazy time to be speaking to the mayor, and I understand that. It was right after President Obama had been elected. The mayor had been a strong supporter of his, and obviously, there was a lot going on in terms of his role at that time. Unfortunately, when we did approach the mayor, he reacted quite quickly and negatively. And I will recall my disappointment, to be blunt, because he was quickly able to call the business leaders and essentially their support went away very quickly for this. So that put us behind the eight ball. We did have two very vocal supporters, that was Councilmember Samuels and Councilmember Remington, and ultimately had three other supporters for the proposal. We had a series of public hearings, and there's a record of those public hearings in which many of these issues were discussed. One of the things that happened, as some of you may remember, is that the park board issue ended up dominating a lot of the public discussion. And so of course, I thought in hindsight, was that a mistake? And perhaps it was. I had a hard time reconciling an effort to rationalize Minneapolis city government without also addressing what I felt was frankly, an anachronistic separation of issues of parks and open spaces and forestry and somehow lopping that off and separating it from the rest of our policymaking. But the truth is that that issue was a political hot button, to say the least. So we did not get on the ballot. We were promised frankly, by council members Johnson, Council President Johnson, Councilmember Goodman, members of the park board, that they would work with the Citizens League and there would be a study. I can't read the minds of charter commissioners, but I think they were persuaded that, well, we need more study. That never happened. So in the interest of candor, I don't think there was ever any real intention for that study to happen, but it was, I have to confess, a brilliant political move to offer it, because by the time that study would even begin, I would be gone. And so would council members that supported this proposal. So it's interesting to me that, and I guess rewarding to me, that the Charter Commission is now taking up this study, even if it's 10 years after one had been promised. And finally, and I've already gone on too long, I will add that both Mayor Fraser, former Congressman Sabo, and myself, we did approach the Charter Commission, asked for that study, but by then, any momentum had disappeared, and there was no appetite for that study. So these efforts did occur, did increase after I left, or continue after I left. But of course, at that point, I had even less influence than I may have at one point had since I was no longer at City Hall. How do we get to yes? I don't know. I'd love to have that discussion. I've already gone on too long, but after 100 years, I think the question has to be asked, when will someone have the political will? When can the city finally fix an issue that has been recognized for a century? And I hope this is the time, because there is a strong sense that the city is rudderless, a strong sense that decisive- a strong sense that decisive leadership of the kind we need is not happening. There is a profound mistrust, I believe, of current city government's capacity to address huge issues. And if we can't fix this now, my question for everybody would be, when can we? So that's more than I said I would do, but with that, I'll open it up to discussion.
All right. What questions do the members of this interview committee have at this point?
I have a lot of thoughts. Paul, thank you.
Succinct and questions, questions are what we're looking at. Frame, whatever it is.
How could we get to politics? The issue that is driving the city now is the police department. Booker Hodges, who is the Assistant Commissioner for Public Safety of Minnesota, told me he did not see any solution to the problem of the police department unless the kind of change to a strong mayor occurred. So you have your hook, if you know how to hook it. The thing is, to have the kind of people who know how to digest what you have said into soundbites, so that the public can be brought on board, this is the answer to your need to have reform of the police department. We can't do it unless we have reform of the city government. And so it's part and parcel. Okay? And then you have somebody, you know, there's, this town is full of marketing people who are brilliant. The guy who elected Paul Wellstone is brilliant. Okay? We have all those people to go to, to translate the message into a political message. Now, I have some questions about, why do you put this city manager in? Why not say, the mayor is essentially the guy in charge, and he appoints the city manager at his pleasure, just like the president appoints the chief of staff?
Can we separate the two questions of what, what's the issue and how to implement it? Because you're getting into the implementation question. I still think it's important to focus on what's the problem? And you're trying to address also, how do you, how do you get the public educated and familiar and willing to support it? Any other thoughts on how to define what the problem is that needs resolution and how we get agreement on that?
Well, I guess Clarence and Wall, if I could respond to the operational question you raised, and I'm happy to get to the PR piece of it too, at whatever point folks would like it to.
Let's leave the PR thing down at the bottom of the list.
Sure. So it's, I confess frustration again, because the charter commission the other night represented my, you know, the 2008, 2009 proposal as a city manager proposal, and it was not. It's exactly, in fact, what you just suggested we needed. So we get into these language issues, but the proposal is a, if we want to call it a strong mayor system, fine, but it is a strong mayor system with a city administrator to whom, or that reports to the mayor. That is very again similar to the Duluth model. And so I would argue, yes, this considerably strengthens the mayor's authority. But I also would say this, mayors are not managers in the traditional sense. Mayors have huge responsibilities to be in the community, to be working with an infinite number of partners, and to have a strong city administrator that reports to the mayor is helpful to a mayor, and that it allows the mayor to make sure that the policies that the mayor and the council have passed are actually implemented. The mayor can't do that.
I know, that's why there's the chief of staff.
Well, it doesn't matter what we call it.
Presidents have the same problem.
The city administrator would report to the mayor and the mayor alone.
I think that by, by bringing up the issue of the city manager, you dilute.
It's not a city manager, it's a city administrator.
A city administrator.
That's the difference.
By even raising that as a big piece, why don't you say, we want to give the mayor responsibility, and he can appoint a city administrator? Don't lead with the administrator, which is the way to start this.
All right, well, I mean, we're getting into the messaging, and that's fine. Obviously, no one is.
We're still, you know, solutions to a problem, that's the point. I think we're in the solutions question. That's where we, that's where everybody seems to get excited and wants to spend a lot of time and energy is in the solutions. There's a myriad of solution ideas that various people have got. My question still is, what are the issues, the problems that we're trying to address? And Paul, you've tried, do you, you have tried to do that at the outset here, to say, hey, there are some things that are going on that are not helpful to the city. It's not stronger, it's not capable of doing things, we don't follow through on decisions that we make. I'm hearing you try to articulate what the problem is, but I think it's fundamentally important to articulate in every conceivable way what falls, falls apart, what doesn't get happen, what's the problem that we've got in the way this system operates? Because until people understand that, it's going to be hard, I think, to talk about the solution that addresses those kinds of problems.
Yeah, you know, there, there is no one point of accountability. Something happens, something goes wrong, whether it's a misbehavior on the part of the police or someone else, you know, where do you go to assure that someone is responsible for it and will be held accountable, and that either immediately or over time, there can be some consequences for failure to act? There are zero consequences for the people in city government, zero consequence for failure to act. And I think we have to have a kind of a system where if I am disgruntled about something, I know where to go and can expect some feedback on it. If I have an issue and raise it, that there is some place, some one place, that someone is going to be held accountable for, for what happened, and there will be some consequences. Right now, there are zero consequences for failure to act.
So let me just jump in on that. What is more obvious as it relates to T's question and Wall's question than what I spoke for a moment about? And that is the murder of George Floyd and the utter failure of the elected officials of Minneapolis to address, and I want to be clear about this, it's not the majority of Minneapolis police officers, it's not even a huge number of them, but it is enough of them to be a cancer on the Minneapolis Police Department. And, and, you know, but, but to the question, I have to say that some of you may have read what I tried to get the Star Tribune to print, that I've tried to get the Star Tribune to cover, and there is no appetite for it. And that is the collective failure and responsibility of Minneapolis city government to address this issue. And what's the ultimate result of this? We have people scoring political points by saying, let's eliminate the police department. We have people marching on the union leader's home in suburban metropolitan area, and very few, if any, of them are holding their own elected officials accountable for what happens. Now, I'm sorry, everyone, but that is nuts. The people that we have the ability to hold accountable are our elected officials. And if we're going to let our elected officials get away to avoid responsibility from their own collective responsibility by saying, let's eliminate the police department, I don't know what more can we need to tell us that the system we have does not create accountability?
That's what I'm trying to. You, you've said the problem, 14 bosses, no responsibility, a mayor with responsibility and no authority. That's the problem. And the incidence of that problem is the police department. But it's not just the police department, it's all the other ones. It's just that the police department can illustrate what you're talking about when you want to convey this. You have a solution, we know what the problem is, 14 bosses, et cetera. I think that crystallizes the problem. And then you exemplify the problem for people who don't understand what that means by saying, this is why we have a failing police department. Not because we don't have good officers, but because we can't manage the police department. Nobody's in charge. So if you can put that together, it seems to me you have what you need, both a description of the problem, exemplifying the problem, and then you have a solution. Give the mayor power to, with the, you know, the mayor's the president, the council is the congress.
Well, I'll tell you this, and I know we want to focus on the details, and we can do that. I am convinced that if then-mayor Ryback and future mayor Hodges had supported the city administrator proposal, and we can quibble about the details, but I'm convinced that it would have passed. We needed leadership, frankly, and that's the challenge we have, because those who are in office, those who are in office, and this is the challenge we have, and again, I confessed, I was somewhat of the same ilk when I didn't push harder for this earlier. There's an inherent problem, or at least a perception of a problem, for those who were there to acknowledge that the city is not functioning well, because it is seen as an indictment of their efforts. And so that's why the challenge we have is, is there someone, are there a group of current elected officials with the courage to lead on this issue and to acknowledge it? I don't know the answer to that. If the answer to that is no, it makes it infinitely more difficult. Is it possible? Maybe, but it's infinitely more difficult if we don't see leadership. If not at city hall, other current political leadership. If this is not a time for leadership, if this is not a time for truth telling, I don't want to get into what's going on in our country right now, but, but if this isn't a time that we can tell people the truth, when is it? And that's really what this, this is. And we need leaders that are willing to do that. And it has to be more than just all of us talking about it, it has to be people that are currently in office.
Who are and where are.
We would like to have a question. Lee has his hand up right now.
Yeah. So Paul, thank you. You know, I was not aware of this effort by yourself, but I went through a similar experience when I was on the city council in the 1970s and came to the conclusion after about a year that we, that the problem wasn't the people, it was the system, and that the weak mayor form of government was the problem. I'm impressed. However, I ended up breaking with my colleagues, and the city council members really did not want to give up power in the way we were thinking about, and at that time, Charles Crumby was mayor, which people were concerned that giving him more power wasn't the solution. But it doesn't matter who the person qualities are, it's the system that's a problem. So my question, and you know, is, is, did you, how did St. Paul manage to pass this type of a system in 1970, when, when in the same period Minneapolis, you know, had failed already a couple of times in getting a stronger mayor form of government? And, you know, I'm impressed with the fact that you've got a substantial minority of council members to go along with this, but it seems like the council members are going to always want to go in the different direction, and the charter amendment that they proposed to deal with the police department would have gone completely in the other direction and messed it up even further. So the question, I guess, that I have is, you know, will the city council, you know, ever come on board with this sort of a thing? And will they, will they kind of give up power to this type of a system?
Well, I could try to answer that, you know, I, I'm hopeful that there's someone down there that has come to the same conclusion that I have, that at least if you're someone who, the, the problem is the system frankly rewards council members who are willing to get on the phone and yell at a department head. It rewards council members that maybe run powerful committees that are able to basically use what I think is an improper use of authority, but, but to drive policy outside, I would add, of public processes, which is where transparency comes into it now. I like to think it's a good thing, but that was never a skill that I either had or maybe wanted to have. Well, you know, it, I call it naive, I prefer to call it government in democracy as it should be. I felt my arguments in terms of policy should be in committee, at council meetings, and if that's the kind of elected official you wish to be, to convince your colleagues and your constituents in a public setting in a rational way, then you would have to have the same frustration, Lee, that I had, which was that decisions even apparently made would not be implemented, that you couldn't take decisive action. But again, there are, I hate to say it, council members who may thrive in the current circumstance because of kind of the, the lack of any rudder and the lack of any discipline. I know, I believe it, Duluth said it, I'm not sure about St. Paul, but there are clear lines that can't be crossed by elected officials in terms of direct contact with staff and others that are not generally followed in Minneapolis. And that's the power that you would give up in the system. And that's a power that a lot of people want to have.
Janice, you have your hand up.
Yes, so Paul, am I correct that Minneapolis is rather unique in this form of dysfunctional city government? And you know, how did we end up with this? That might lead us to some.
Well, that's a great question, and I'm only an amateur Minneapolis city charter historian, but because of the work I did, I'm a bit of one. If, you know, most of the Minneapolis city charter literally dates back to even before Minne, Minnesota was a state. That's how old it is. And, you know, for example, the, the whole discussion of the police department and the direct reporting of the, to, of the police to the mayor, that's similar language to what, basically unchanged from what it was in 1870, at a time when there were four police officers for the entire city, when most cities didn't even have a police department. So it really, it, it, as much as anything, almost accidental, you know, most of the city services didn't even exist when this charter was first developed. And one of the things that I have mentioned any number of times, number one, I've said, nobody would create this form of government today. If there were 50 different forms of government that we were thinking about, this wouldn't be in the top 50. And number two, should the people of Minneapolis have a right, after over 100 years, to assess in what government system they have to live under? And, and we can get into what the, what the exact proposal is, but are we really telling people that this form of government that was created in the 19th century is one they are stuck with and that they will never have a voice in changing? That was one of the pieces of, of the argument, is let people have a voice, and how that happens, of course, is difficult, but not even to give voters an opportunity to weigh in on this, I think, is frankly outrageous.
But the fact of the matter is, the voters did have a chance, and they did speak very loudly twice in proposals that were crafted to make the mayor the chief executive and the chief policymaker and the city council to adopt the policy. Now, that was presented twice by the charter commission, that was voted down twice in the city.
Not by the voters?
It was, turned down by the voters twice.
When?
That's what happened. We had a, the proposal from Humphrey and the one in 1950, I think, 1952 or something like that.
Okay. So not in the last 60 years?
I agree, our last 60 years.
Okay, fair enough.
There have been two times when mayors There have been two times when major proposals for recrafting the organization city government were presented to the voters, and both times they were turned down.
And, and they're turned down because, and this is where, if there's anybody that watches the civic caucus who is a PR professional, please volunteer your time and services, because the biggest challenge is this frankly mistaken notion that Minneapolis city government is somehow more democratic and more responsive because of this form of government, that we're suspicious of too much power. The problem is, number one, there's no transparency, so decisions are made 90% of the time without the public even seeing the decision-making process with what we have now. And number two, as I've said, decisions that are made are never implemented. So somebody has to explain to me how that increases the power of the people. But that is the winning argument, when this is always brought up, that, oh, we're very suspicious of too much power. That is, in, in, in that, I obviously never got to the voters, so I never had a chance to craft, you know, for our proposal, what that message would be, but that's the hardest part of this, is to somehow convince people that this kind of non-transparent, non-accountable form of government, it's, it's a Potemkin village frankly. It, it, it pretends, you know, to, to be more responsive and it's just the opposite.
Tom, you have your hand up.
Question, question. Mention this thing, and Clarence, you have too, that if I look at the federal government, the congress makes the legislation, but the president and his cabinet and all the departments are underneath the president, which is responsible for implementing the policies, and therefore there is a clear line of responsibility for the departments all the way up to the president, and then back to the, the congress who has created the, the legislation. So the idea, I, I'm uncertain as to, you know, you say that all these things were passed, that the departments are acting on their own because they don't feel that they have anybody that they're responsible to. Question is, is the structure right now of the Minneapolis city able to mimic or clone or to reflect the kind of government that we've got at the federal level? The idea of having an administrator is pretty straightforward because I've had that experience with other governments in other countries and in departments in academia and in the corporate world, where the president of the organization has an administrative assistant, which is responsible for executing the details, while the president or the head is a gadfly and a publicity and, you know, and the gladhander and all the rest of that sort of stuff. So the question is, does the charter that exists today do that? And because if you went to the federal kind of a structure, the people understand that because they know how to get the power and to get, move it through, but they can't because right now, I don't understand why they can't and why departments get these mandates and don't feel obligated to carry them out. So is, is there something preventing this kind of basic federal kind of a problem that we have doing it? A mayor with a cabinet as well as the legislative branch of the government?
The question is, does the charter do what the federal structure does?
No, no, it doesn't. No, I mean, the analogy would be if, at the federal level, every two years, the members of the cabinet had to receive a majority of the votes of the House and Senate to keep their job.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, now, what is analogous to the proposal that, that, that we made in 2008 and 2009, what is analogous is that the department heads would have to be approved by the city council, just like cabinet secretaries have to receive, you know, their appointments have to go through congress. So there is a, there's that piece of it. But it really is very simple, and, and you're, you're making a good point, Tom, that, that the type of government we're talking about here is one that people are familiar with, they're familiar with it at the state level, they're familiar with it at the federal level. And one of the questions is, how many people in Minneapolis, you know, if, if you're not like all of us deeply invested in these kinds of issues, how many even have a basic understanding of what Minneapolis city government really looks like?
Can I ask, John has had his hand up for a while, isn't there some mechanical way that we can inform the chairman that we would like to say something?
Yes, you flag a flag, you, you do the flag as a participant, and then I'll see if I recognize you. It's on the...
Participants?
Yes.
And, and I, I...
In the bottom, it says flag, and you push play.
Play.
I'm leaving that to...
It says raise hand.
It's a raise hand button.
I leave that to Clarence, but if John has a question, I'm happy to answer it.
Just raise your hand, that'll work too.
My question is, can we use the model of an outside commission to create ideas and present them to the council? Three examples. The Business Partnership had a massive, massive influence on K-12 education in Minnesota, but we had an outside group work with us to get ideas we wanted to promote before we put them into the market. Secondly, I think the way the league did metropolitan governance and fiscal disparities was an outside idea to gain, to gain strength once we had it locked down as to what we wanted to do. And there are a couple of other examples, the school board, for example, in the early 70s, had an outside group, mixture of business people and others, who did make some contributions to how the school district was, how the school district governance was going on. But does that have any possibility of creating momentum for a change?
I'm not a big fan of that, to be honest, on this issue, John. I think we've had so many studies on this issue, who, you know, we tried to, now, was it, you, you could argue it wasn't a study, but, but, you know, we had about 20 folks look at this issue, citizens, you know, when we did what we did in 2008, so we tried to do some of the vetting. And I have to confess, you know, I'm maybe not the best person to ask about this because that's how my efforts were torpedoed at the last minute in 2009. So I have no confidence that, that somehow another call for a study will be anything other than what it always has been, which is, let's avoid the current effort to change and kick it down the road again. You know, my, my opinion on this is it's not complicated, that, that, you know, that it's, it's obvious to anybody who knows anything about what the structure of any organization should be, and the, the structure of Minneapolis city government is, is completely unwise, not fit for the 21st century, probably wasn't ever fit for the 20th century, and we've known that for 100 years, we don't need another study. So I don't know, to your question of political will, I don't know what it would take. I would like nothing better than Mayor Frye to say this has to happen. And, and I'm not going to name names, I'll tell you at least two candidates for mayor who I talked to back in 2013 said, well, I'll do that in my third term. Well, we don't have three more terms to wait. I mean, I really think frankly, this has to be fixed now. We, we've got a crisis in this city in terms of police accountability, but that's not the only issue.
What are the others to handle? What are the other issues besides police accountability?
Oh gosh, we've got issues of, of economic empowerment, we've got issues of regulatory reform, we've got issues as to whether our affordable housing efforts are really what they need to be, we've got issues of the gaps, we've got issues of small business development, regulatory reform, we've got issues of real concern in terms of the middle class that I, I fear maybe leaving the city of Minneapolis. We've got a lot of trends and problems that will only get worse if we don't have some very decisive leadership, and we can't wait another two, three, four, or five years, that's a whole other conversation, but we can't wait another, you know, these, some of the issues are the same ones that were pointed out by the Citizens League in 2000, in, you know, in 1960s. Lee, you mentioned the, I, I, maybe, I don't know, Lee and John, if you were on the council when former mayor Hofstadt had the municipal finance commission recommendations, and I think that might have been before Stendig was mayor, and my history might not be right. I, I will tell you, there were about 100 recommendations made 50 years ago, and probably two-thirds of them still haven't happened.
I remember that, I was on the council that...
I was on, no, I was on the commission.
Oh, you were?
Don Wilkie, Don Wilkie headed it up, and I was on the commission that made those recommendations. But, so the, where, you know, the, the charter commission is looking at this now, and you've had, you mentioned that you were part of a group of former elected officials that were interviewed by the charter commission. Can you characterize what you see as going on, you know, what are these other former elected officials saying, and where do you see the charter commission on this issue right now?
Well, I can't speak to, and I certainly can share in more detail, some of the, there were a number of former elected officials who were active, I know Joe Nemec was fairly active in this effort, and a number of them were, were supportive, going way back to Barbara Carlson, and, and I think, not remembering all the names, we had city, I wish I'd, I'd approached the two of you if I, if I didn't, it was kind of, you know, but, but we, at the time, certainly we had a large number of former Minneapolis elected officials supportive. I, I really can't speak to that now. You know, and, and I can tell you that, you know, and I think maybe some of you have too, I've had a number of conversations with a number of people, and some of it has revolved around the policing issues that Walt and T have mentioned, and, and, and some of it is related to a lot of other issues. There are a number of leaders at the city of Minneapolis who I think would be ready to, to jump onto a campaign for this, but the problem is, unlike 2008, you know, I, this is not my full-time work anymore, I, I, my, those obligations are elsewhere, and so, and that's true of most of us, you know, who is actually going to lead this, who would staff it? What is the media campaign and the public relations campaign? I'm not going to name names, but we had somebody ready to do that for us in 2008, 2009, that I think would have volunteered for it. And, and how does that happen if it's not done by people currently in office? That's incredibly challenging to, to somehow have leadership from outside any of the current political leadership to lead an effort like this. That's why I'm so hoping that somebody that is currently in office will do this.
Do you, do you have any idea as to where, where current elected officials stand on this issue, where does a mayor and members of the city council stand on this?
You know, T and everyone, I'm not the best person to ask that question, I, I don't know. I know, I could say, because it was said in a public meeting, that I think the charter commission is planning on, they're obviously already having public discussions about this, they've met with department heads, they've met with myself and other former mayors and council presidents about this proposal. I don't know the extent to which they've talked to the current leadership. Ironically, it may be in that way, not dissimilar to what, what I was doing, you know, or we were doing, the group of us, doing our homework before those conversations happened. I think that's probably what maybe they've done too, which I think is wise, but I, I, I would only be speculating that those conversations are going to be happening relatively soon.
Well, I, my only observation at this point is, I looked at all the material that the city charter commission is, is developing, and it's huge, it's an enormous enterprise that they're undertaking right now. And there seems to be a real commitment to, in a serious inquiry with a lot of people who have been involved, with people who are currently department heads, with people who have been coordinators, and I don't know, but maybe they're going to be interviewing the, the members of the city council and the mayor. But there seems to be some, some momentum currently within the charter commission, which is an enormously important place for this to occur, because they have the ability to put the matter before the voters. They can put this issue before the voters. When they conclude it's time to do that, they can do it. Now, I, I think that's an significant shift from what it's been in the past, when it was all...
Clarence, I want to, I want to agree with what you just said, and, and I'll tell you exactly what I said to the charter commission. I think we owe a debt of gratitude for the charter commission for the way they handled the, I think, very misguided charter proposal. And, and, and frankly, many of them I know received threats and, and were subject to a lot of scorn and angry messages and others, but they absolutely did the right thing. I think because of that, they have more perhaps credibility, at least among a significant number of folks than maybe they did before, and I think you're right, if the charter commission actually passes this, that does have some weight. Maybe the charter commission putting this on the ballot frankly would end up, if nothing else, forcing the elected officials, current and former, to take a position. So I think it's incumbent on those of us, certainly I will be doing this and I've communicated this to them, those of us who support their efforts, to let them know that and to appear at the public hearings, to make our voices heard, because there will be considerable opposition, I fear, to this.
Lee, you have a question? What, Lee has a question, excuse me, go ahead, T, follow up question to...
Steve Kramer's position.
I'm done, I gave my, I answered already.
Okay. Go ahead, T.
I was asking about Steve Kramer and the downtown council, what's their position?
Well, I would hope that the downtown council and the business community would support this. I think, you know, the Minneapolis, my, my impression historically of Minneapolis' political culture is that those with interest at City Hall, those voices in the community that are active in civic affairs, and maybe it's not all bad, but I think it's to the extreme in Minneapolis. They simply do not want to disagree with those that are in political positions of authority, they don't want to openly defy them. Just being blunt, you know, that's what, I, I think things may have evolved to where there would be a willingness to do that. I know in 2009, that's what happened, is that, that the business community saw that the, you know, the mayor and, and the majority of the council were not going to be supportive of this, and, and I know that they, when I presented to the business community, they were completely on board, they thought it all made sense, we had a, I think we had 30 business leaders, it was a very positive meeting, but they weren't going to go there if the mayor wasn't going to go there. So I frankly think if the mayor would come out for this, the business community would. But that's, I think that could happen, but it's going to be a lot more possible if, if some of the current elected officials support it.
I agree. Paul, we heard Steve Kramer for a middle-city presentation about a week ago. He is warming up to the idea, he doesn't, he didn't make any personal commitment, but it's pretty clear indirectly that he thinks it's a good idea. All he said to us was, we're reviewing ideas like that inside our board and committees. I think you're right, and that if Frye would say, let's take a run at this, even though it's perhaps in his own self-interest, and maybe he doesn't want to stir the pot given the election, but that's when you challenge somebody to take leadership. And I think it'd be well worth while making more inquiry to Steve, and I'm happy to try to do that by phone call or email, and I'll let you guys all know what I hear.
What we, what we, I think what's important is, is, you know, how do, how do those who... do those who would be supportive of this effort communicate, whether it's to Mayor Frye, the charter commission, and others, that there are a group of people who care deeply about this city, who are, will do everything possible to support those with the courage to step forward on this. Because there's leadership, and then there's, I think when people want to be leaders, they'd like to know that at least there's some people are gonna, gonna walk the plank with them, if they're not going to be completely alone.
But there are other people being seen on this stuff, I mean, Minneapolis Foundation has a big run at this, a business partnership has, has looked at this, there's widespread support for rebuilding Lake Street and other parts of the city, and I don't know that they would ignore, uh, being asked to respond to the question, do we need to change this form of government? But anyway, let me, I'll try to pursue that in the next while.
Tom, you got a question?
Can I make a comment? The, you, Paul keeps talking about, uh, publicity, um, marketing, remember that it is the citizens of the city who are going to vote, and the question is, do these citizens know what they're doing, including young people who are potential voters? So is there a civics course, is there any way to, to educate the citizens, the citizens, the, the students, the young people coming up about the need of, of government and the options that are open to them, and why they would support the reform, so that they become informed citizens who are able to make a vote and get this thing carried through? Uh, I mean, these are the people that are moving Black Lives Matter, these are people that are working about LGBT, there are all these people that want this voice, and they want city government, but nobody quite understands what's going to happen, where it is, and how they're going to participate in it, and all the rest of that. And I think we've dropped civic education from the schools, and we have no way of educating the public to make intelligent decisions about this critical issue. So perhaps maybe instead of worrying about the business council and all the rest of the gray beards who are in organizations, and whether they approve it or not, the people that are going to make the decision are the voters, which are the residents of the city, and not the presidents of General Mills, or the, the, any one of the other study groups, the Civic Caucus, so, Citizens League, and all the rest of this, if they're not educated, and voters that are going to make those decisions.
So I, I, I just want to make one comment on that, and I know we're running out of time, I, I think, you know, what you put your finger on, Tom, is my, you know, and you end up getting my more global views of our political state, our, our, our politics have become almost exclusively about theater, and, and, and about what people say, and how they act, but not what they actually do, what they actually accomplish, and, and, how we translate that into this issue or any number of issues, I think is the challenge that we have. You know, how do we convince people, quite frankly, that are rightly marching the streets about some of the issues with, uh, policing and race, how do we convince those same people that merely marching in the streets alone is not going to solve the problem unless we have the ability to hold those we elect to account in a rational way to actually achieve results? And that's what seems to be missing.
So it's back, it's back to, it's back then to the question of, what's the problem? If they have got, if they don't understand what the problem is, and they can't translate that into their lives and their, and their enthusiastic effort to get change, uh, it's going to be hard to engage them, or to get them at least positively engaged. Now, they might just decide not to vote, but if they vote, and they demonstrated they can vote, uh, how do you, how do you develop an interest in quote, the myriad of problems that I hear people are saying exist? That's a, there are consequences to the way this system is structured.
May- maybe that, maybe that's where our opportunity may lie. I, I could envision our inviting from, uh, people from a, a range of these groups that are out there, uh, raising these critical questions, uh, to, uh, to, to our, uh, interview, where we then pose this more broader issue, and how it is connected, maybe connected with, to the very critical issues that they are raising, because unless they are able to, particularly around this issue of police reform, if, unless they're able to, uh, impact the, the, uh, the, the, the political situation, the, uh, public and elected officials, uh, on this, if they put this on, high on their list of, of, of issues, not much is going to happen, because they're focusing in on, uh, you know, as Paul said, those high visibility wards, but might, might this be a place for some calm, uh, discussion and reflection, and where we raise these critical questions out of the sight of, uh, audience that they are trying to impress, but, uh, to, to, to articulate and talk about, you know, where and how they see achieving their, their, their goals, you know, it, there's a role for the high-profile protesters, and it's also, there needs to be somebody behind that who understands the issues, and can help articulate them, and get them through to the people who make the decision. And I, I'd be interested in, you know, having someone from, uh, Black Lives Matter and some of the other groups, where the focus is on, on this issue or issues like that, and not on their high-profile issues, and to see to what extent they can help connect those dots. I had an opportunity shortly after the DeMarde Claude killing, to meet with some of the people in Black Lives Matters, and talking about some of their strategies and how they were organized, and who was in their group, how inclusive was the group that they were, that, that, that they had there, and you, you need to have a, a really large table where this disparity can be brought to your table without people jumping all over you about them, and, uh, that, they were not connected to many people outside of that core group, and so that everything that they discussed was within the, the, the confines of that core group that was there, which, uh, was not, uh- that's it, could, uh, should have been, providing some opportunities to talk to some of the people about these kinds of issues, and, and where, where they're not there to perform.
You know, there was the Arab Spring, there was the, the square in Egypt, which toppled the government, back in the seventies, we had teach-ins, um, there are ways in which you get civic engagement, uh, think of Greta Thunberg in terms of what she was able to do with the environmental movement to move young people, uh, Orgs 350 is talking about climate change, they're getting the public involved, the young people, the young adults, and when I talk about young people, it's not just the, the high school students, we're talking about 20 and 30-somethings.
But the question, the question here, Tom, is not, what are the movements and what are the interests that are excited about whatever these days? The question is, how do you link their interest and their concerns to the question of how government in the city of Minneapolis is organized?
That's right.
That's the issue, how do you connect that? It isn't how do you, how do you solve the climate problem, it's how does any contribution the city of Minneapolis can make to salute, to solving the, the climate problem relate to the way, uh, the city is organized? That's the, the string that's got to be connected to that discussion.
Well, the only way to do that is to get them in a meeting, to talk to them about them, and get them to understand, that's education, that's, uh-
Well, I'm just saying, that, that we, we just, they would like to tell us all about their solution to the climate problem, or whatever it is. Uh, that's, I understand that. My question is, if we're going to focus on this question of the organization of government in the city of Minneapolis, how do you get that discussion continuously, uh, before whomever, so that it can be useful, and has some impact on the people who are? In the end, it looks as though they're going to be invited to vote on a matter that the city charter commission is going to place before the voters.
So I know we need to wrap this up, and I need to wrap it up, to be honest, as, as well, but, um, I, I think one of the dilemmas, the biggest dilemma here is that for this to succeed, there has to be an accounting, there has to be an accounting of where the city has failed. It's not just on policing issues, but that is the biggest by far among them. And the, uh, uh, I, my own experience is that there has been, um, across the board, whether it be media, or even folks in my own networks, uh, an unwillingness to hold to account Minneapolis city government for the failure of its own police department. And if we can't even do that, uh, then we're not going to succeed in this. And, and that's, it's, it's, there has to be some very blunt talk about, on any number of levels, that the city has failed, and there is a, there are a huge number of folks to be blunt, that, you know, I was there as well, I don't want to have to say that, you know, because perhaps to some extent I'm a part of that, but, but there has to be an acknowledgement that the city has failed on all of these progressive fronts. These are progressive ideas that we have not successfully implemented in the city of Minneapolis, and there has to be a reckoning. And unless collectively we're willing to publicly have that reckoning, this isn't going to pass just because of certain lines on a page that we say are more efficient than some other lines on a page, it's going to pass because of a final conclusion and reckoning that the city has failed, and for the city to succeed, this is necessary. And-
You're suggesting there's more substantial discussion that has to go on about what has not been done, or isn't getting done, than simply the question of how efficient this city is? Because a lot of the discussion-
Right.
-has historically focused on the efficiency concerns, uh, how does the job get done, kind of thing? And who gets responsible for doing the job, and all that kind of thing? So you're suggesting there's a bigger picture here than that?
Yeah, so-
Any other, any other closing brief questions from anybody? We need to wrap this up very quickly, so any other further questions? All right, hearing none, thank you very much.
Dana had her hand waving.
Yeah, um, thanks, Clarence. Um, Paul, one last questioner. Why do you think Mayor Frye, who is the mayor, and one would think, would like to be part of a strong mayor system, why is he being so silent on this issue?
Uh, you know, I really don't want to-
Yes.
-comment on that, to be honest, but, but, but I, I guess, in fairness to the mayor, I don't know that he's been approached yet. So I would compare Mayor Frye's position to this as I might have Mayor Reibek's position before I talked to him. No, and I, to my knowledge, there hasn't been, you know, and, and, and I think it would be only reasonable for Mayor Frye to, to wait, certainly to take any clear position on this, until at a minimum, there's a proposal before the charter commission. What I hope Mayor Frye does, and I hope what a significant number of council members do, is to do what didn't necessarily happen 11 years ago, and that's, that's to say, I don't, even if they were just to say, I'm not sure where I end up on this issue, but it's really important, and we need to have a very serious conversation about this. I would hope they would say that whether it's this year, or sometime in the near future, it's important that the people of the city have a right to weigh in on the form of government that they have. And they can do those things without committing to any particular, uh, but I think it might be counterproductive for Mayor Frye to just unequivocally come out in favor of this. I think in fairness to him, he needs to hear the community input, he needs to hear the arguments, uh, and, and, but I do hope that rather than resist this effort, as we saw in 2008, 2009, that he welcomes.
Any other short questions? Well, thank you again, Paul, for, Paul Gildge, are you on right now?
Yeah, I got a question.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I, I sensed that it always seems right, when discussing the problem, to talk about the generalizations which fall from the specific instances, rather than to turn back to the specific instances. I would like to violate that, and ask, what is the most egregious, specific example of a serious problem affecting the city of Minneapolis because of its current structure?
Well, I do think it's the policing issue. You know, and, and I think the irony of that is people have this sense that the mayor runs the police department, and that's just not accurate. It's the Minneapolis City Council that oversees the citizens review board, it's the city council that has concurrent authority on making policies as they relate to public safety, um, and it's the city council that reappoints police chiefs, um, and so what I was most aggrieved by in the, the charter effort was this, I thought to be blunt, collective washing of the hands by the city council, that none of this is their fault, because they haven't had any ability to do anything about it, I categorically reject that. So I do think that that is far and away the most egregious, uh, example of the failure of this form of government. How you can have an audit by the federal government in 2015, um, I believe in fact, one of President Biden's recent appointments was involved in that, frankly, I just pointed yesterday, uh, listing a number of, uh, recommendations, most of which were never acted upon, five years later, um, how that can be allowed to happen in any sensible organization that would not be allowed to happen. So I do think that's the most egregious, I know I've already spoken to that, Paul, but I think that's the most egregious example of all. But, you know, the problem is that you, you, these things aren't easily documented, you know, these, these, uh, you know, why did the ordinance on park dedication fees not even be enforced for three years? I probably will never know, but all it took was a few committee chairs, or who knows who, to say, well, let's just not do anything about that for three years, you know? Why is it that there's a unanimous staff direction to the police chief that is just cavalierly ignored? You know, I don't know what those conversations were, and, and what led to that. How is it that we had, uh, the, the worst fiscal decision in generations to have the city of Minneapolis is-
Hello?
Oh, you're frozen.
Are we running out of time?
No, he's frozen, I think.
He's frozen.
He's frozen. Well, this may be the conclusion of our meeting. I think we're reaching the end in terms of time.
A cliffhanger.
Yeah, he said the worst fiscal decision in generations, and then we don't get to hear what it is.
And then we'll have to, have to have that picked up, if we want to pick it up at a later date. So at this point, I think we have to conclude our discussion. I know there's still a couple of hands up, Paul Gildge, I see you're still handing up.
No, I'm, I'm taken care of, I'm done.
But anyway, I think we're at the end of this opening to a discussion, that maybe we want to continue. Uh, question is how we're going to do that, and, and what we're going to try to focus on. The discussion is live in the city, the city charter commission is discussing it, you can go and listen to their discussion, almost every Thursday, they have a discussion either in their committee or the whole group, about proposals, ideas, uh, relative to the developing or emerging set of proposals that will come before the voters, I think. But in any way, the charter commission is alive, it's very alive, more than I have ever seen in my life. So anyhow, thanks everybody for joining in the discussion, your questions, um, and thanks to Paul, even though I don't see him right now, thank you for the lively presentation of your life and experience, some of your frustrations, and the issues that you think the city has to begin to address and revolve, resolve.